I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. It is Monday, December 11th, 2023 at 6:00 PM, 6:01 PM at the Elkhorn Area School Board Meeting in the Susan Tolle-Lively Boardroom of the 1887 Building. I'd like to do a roll call, call to order, please.
All right, Mr. Andre is excused. He's celebrating the birthday of his five-year-old son with his family and wanted to make sure to let everybody know that he'll watch the meeting and, you know, keep himself up to speed. Mr. Gayheart?
Yeah.
Mr. Gatten?
Yeah.
Mrs. Eiersong?
Here.
Mrs. Costa?
Here.
Mrs. Reckles is also excused. She had a work conflict and then the band concert at the high school later. Mr. Sparrow?
Here.
Mr. Barkus?
Here.
Mr. Forrester?
Here.
Okay, we have a call. And thank you all for coming. I am going to start out the evening by asking if anybody would like to... We do have a 30-minute policy, a 30-minute limit on our public speaking comment. We have more comments that would like to be made than what that 30 minutes will allow, three minutes per person, assuming everybody takes three minutes. And it's possible they won't, you know, but would anyone like to entertain a motion to extend that 30-minute speaking period?
Do you have a timeframe that you're thinking, Julie? Another 30 minutes, another 15?
I would, I would say I'd like to get through all the 18 people who have registered.
Okay, so then I move that we extend the public comment period to such time that all comments have been read.
Okay.
A second.
It's been moved and extended to extend the public comment period of community participation to allow each person who has filled out a card to speak. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
Mrs. Eiersong?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles is excused. Mr. Sparrow?
Yes.
Mr. Barkus?
Yes.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
So before we get started, I am going to read a statement about community participation. Pursuant to school board policy 187, residents of the Elkhorn Area School District, families of district students and employees wishing to address the board may do so in person. The verbal comment period shall last no longer than 30 minutes. We have changed that for this evening, but it is limited to three minutes maximum per person. Finally, the community participation period is an important time for the Board of Education to hear concerns, gratitude, et cetera, of its constituents. That said, prior to making the statement, please be aware that each speaker bears the personal risk if anything they say during community participation of the school board meeting is defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. Okay, that being said, our first person up will be Lisa Detman.
You mean my mom?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, good evening. I'm Lisa Detman Webb. I am a longtime resident of the Elkhorn Area School District, and I have been an English and speech teacher for the Elkhorn High School for the last 30 years. Throughout the tenure of my career, the commitment this community has had and continues to make to the education of our children is what makes this district the place I wanted to raise and educate my own children. Of the many things Elkhorn Area School District has to offer, literacy has always been paramount in our mission, as it should be, and the instructional tools, specifically literature, has prepared our kids to be high-functioning influential citizens. These books we teach and have available to students not only provide mirrors in which students conceive themselves, but also windows to broader perspectives, diverse cultures, and the world. To deny our students equitable access to these books clouds these mirrors and transforms the windows into closed doors. Thankfully, the restriction on many of these titles has been temporary, but when we bend to a mindset that is outside the traditional norms of our community, we adversely affect our students' ability to think critically and function in the real world with empathy and common sense. Long term, this puts our kids at a significant disadvantage in the democratic process. I do not believe that the policy upon which the request to remove 444 books from the high school and middle school was ever intended to be used as a weapon, but in this case, it seemingly has. I have the utmost respect and trust in our district and school building administrators, and I have faith that our elected school officials will revisit the policy to ensure that our students have equitable access to learning. And in closing, I want to thank the Elkhorn community and current EASD parents and students for their continued commitment to the quality and equitable access to public education and the mission of our district.
Sorry. Sorry, this is... Mackenzie, first to challenge.
Hello, I'm Mackenzie. I'm an English teacher at the high school. The Elkhorn Area School District has a reputation statewide for being one of the best school districts for students and employees because it has a community that values education and a school board that is consistent in supporting what the vast majority of the community wants for their children, the opportunity to attend the school with a great culture and incredible academic opportunities. As educators, we understand that all families have different values and routinely adapt as necessary to make sure we abide by a family's wishes for their child. The 1,200 pages of book objections ask for far more than that. While we were contending with these objections, I spent my evenings reading end of the trimester student reflections. They continually reassured me that we are doing the right things for students. I felt it was imperative for you to hear them. One student wrote, "To me, this text was one of the most influential books I have ever read, about a book on the list." Another student explained, "I read books I didn't know I would like and was surprised by how good they were. I love that we got a choice of what to read." The next, "I read three books this year, but I'm planning on reading many more because of how much this class inspired me to read and actually enjoy it." Another statement said, "I read four books this try, four more than I ever thought. I discovered that I liked reading if it's about things I'm interested in. What are my future goals? Read more. I found my favorite genre in books. And finally, my favorite assignment was the last book I read. I've never actually enjoyed a book before that one, written about another book on the list." I assure you that these responses were reiterated time and again. I ask that the board and community continue to do everything in their power to allow us to focus on the things that matter in our classrooms and listen to the only clientele that exists in our profession, our students. Thank you for your time."
Cody? Sorry if I mispronounce.
Hello, I'm Kodo Rebernack, and I am a sophomore at Elkhorn Area High School. Me and my peers have had to watch our English teachers and librarian take on the front of this controversy and overall misguided choices of a small group of parents. Additionally, me and many of my peers have a driver's license, have a job, and are choosing what college to attend. But at some, but at the same time, we are pretty much being told that we do not have the maturity to read young adult fiction. This has felt even more disrespectful when many of my peers were able to find that this list of books under review had a pattern of relating to the experiences of minorities and genuine elements in many parts of our lives. There's two titles out of many that caught my eye. "Flamer" centers around the experience of being a teenager while discovering your identity as a queer person, accepting it, dealing with harm and ignorance, and overcoming suicidal ideation. This book especially hits close to home since I've lost and many people who've lost loved ones to suicide. And I know that prevention can come from almost any media, including literature. "The Handmaid's Tale." Though very controversial, it promotes critical thought and is required for one of the many, for one of the very major AP English classes. Removal of this book from our collection will result in that class no longer being available. It is extremely disrespectful that this anonymous group or person will hide behind a history made list and still remain anonymous while trying to parent me and many others in their own narrow view. It is abhorrent and vile. If you truly believe that your parenting guidance can be undone by your child radio book, that really reflects on your overall ability to raise a well-adjusted person.
What do you feel about life?
Hey, there's no additional comments or you'll be removed. Only those who are speaking during the public comment. Understood? Don't talk. You can leave or I'll have one. We're fine.
Okay. I was in a line of fire, so, you know.
Lillian Wooliver.
Hello. I am Lillian Wooliver, and I am a student at Elkhorn Area High School and an amateur at the middle school. In middle school, I was not a big reader. When I came to high school, my teacher started giving me historical and realistic books, and my love for reading flew. Currently, I'm going to be going to WST, and the books given in school have reinforced my love in hearing stories of life and the love of diversity. Books allow us to relate to characters by sympathizing, empathizing, and connecting with them. Elkhorn Area School District strives to provide students for post-secondary, no matter what they choose to do. Books allow us to relate to others in our lives by making us more connected. Some books that tick make the banned list, such as "A Mice and Men", have many topics that can be seen as questionable. This makes me question the accuracy of this amount of literature. I believe that if a parent would like to monitor their readings in school, they can request the material books being taught. And if it goes against your personal beliefs or values, the teachers can offer an alternative option as well. As I've seen currently in the high schools, it's being offered by many teachers. Thank you guys for your time.
Next person is Sam Way.
Hello, my name is Sam Way. I am a senior here at Elkhorn Area High School. Now, as you know, as a senior, you're there for four years. And through those four years, I have used our high school's library an undoubtable great amount of times. I have had the freedom to choose what book I wanted and when I wanted to read it. But now that those books are being restricted, I no longer have that freedom. Mind you, these are books that every other high school in the conference still has in their library. Now, most, the solution that most parents or people would turn to would be the public library that's right across there in town. Now, I am fortunate enough to have a driver's license, a library card, and parents who wanted to take me there as a kid. But a large amount of our students do not have either one of those or all of those. They do not have means of transportation, parents who would like to take them, or parents who have the time to take them. So I have come up with a few alternatives instead of taking away our resources, the ones that we already have. One would be a form at the beginning of the year that you would fill out during your child's enrollment period. The second one is quite similar. It's a Google form that is continuously up on the Elkhorn Area High School's website under either the Students or Academics tab. You would put in your child's Skyward number, their full name, your email, and the book or books you do not want them reading. So if the child would end up like to checking that book out, they would not be able to. Thank you so much for listening and taking the time to listen to the children whose lives may be greatly disrupted by the decision you guys choose to make. Thank you.
All right, next up is Kelly Wallbrand.
Hi, my name is Kelly Wallbrand. I reside in Elkhorn. I will be reading this letter from Dr. Judith Rolfs, who has been a licensed marriage and family counselor in the state of Wisconsin for over 30 years. She's worked both in private practice and at Credence Therapy Center in our own town of Elkhorn. Here are her words. Dear members of the Elkhorn School Board, obviously, we can't control all the stimuli coming into our children's minds through social media, but we can control what we intentionally allow to enter through the school setting. The information absorbed into their developing minds during their formative years is extremely critical. Censorship has long been established as essential in society for protecting vulnerable youth. A system of age-based ratings for movies exists today. No one opposes that. Why should violence, nudity, dangerous behavior, et cetera, in books not have protective barriers for children since visual impact of readings creates images more intense than simply watching a movie? We can analyze books along the same lines. The children of this generation have in many ways been robbed of the carefree experience of childhood. We see the outcome of this in their mental health. In ages 10 through 14, we have an alarmingly increase in suicides, more than double since 2006, making it the second-leading cause of death for that age group according to the most recent data from the Center for Disease Control. Rates of suicide among children 5 to 11 have risen on average of 15% a year from 2013 to 2020. The pre-teen and teen years are a turbulent time for hormones and emotions. In fact, right around the time our kids enter middle school, the massive changes happening within their brains and bodies amplify the intensity of their emotions. Why am I opposed to children reading about extreme violence particularly committed against child? We can create subconscious fears as they fantasize that this could be them. The attraction of any literature is that readers identify with the characters, and children do. I also oppose depictions of apparent sexual behavior in children. When their brain is fully developed, which research validates doesn't happen till maybe ages of 20 to 25, they can read anything they want. I offer this information to you as a professional who has counseled countless children and families. I recommend not filling impressionable minds with thoughts which do more harm than good. In summary, I strongly suggest you remove all books depicting violent behaviors by or towards children or adults. Thank you for considering this information. Respectfully, Dr. Judith Rolfs.
Next is just handout. Next is Lori Aller.
Hi, my name is Lori Aller. I am a parent of five children who have and/or are in school in the Elkhorn Area High School, and I'm also the athletic secretary there. In an email from Ms. Bowlinger, she requested a total of 281 books being removed from student access at EHS with the reasoning that all 281 books contain content that would be harmful to children. With that reasoning, I hope she has taken the time to contact the owners of TikTok, Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat, and Twitter. Kids will see far worse on social media, social media than they will ever read in literature. Three of my children have graduated from Elkhorn Area High School with a stellar education that has prepared them very well for college and beyond. Removing books is a disservice to the school district's children, students. It will essentially put graduates at a disadvantage when compared to students who had the opportunity to read, analyze, and learn from these books. Ms. Bowlinger will be responsible for every new college student from Elkhorn Area High School struggling in a class where being one of these books would have been beneficial. Why do I know the book choices and curriculum in this district are successful? My oldest was in the top 12 of this class. My second oldest was the salutatorian of this class, as well as a national merit scholar. If you are not familiar with the significance of that accomplishment, I'll let you in on it. He will graduate from the University of Texas in May without having spent one cent on his undergraduate degree. My middle child was the valedictorian of this class. My two children, currently in high school, are excelling academically. My kids have read books on this list. It hasn't adversely affected their intelligence or their moral character. This is a movement founded on racism, ignorance, and fear. It is this school board's duty and obligation to put an end to this foolish request and the idiotic policy that allowed it. There is no reason to allow any outside group or one narrow-minded individual to dictate what the students in this district read. A parent is more than welcome to read, to extend their overreaching bias to any child in this community or school district. As a matter of fact, if these parents are so concerned about what their kids read, tell them not to read those books and leave the rest of us to our own parenting. I look around this room, and I am sure most of you have read books on this list, yet none of you appear to be morally degenerate idiots. This movement wants to encourage individuals to bind to a group thing as if we are not capable of making an intelligent decision without their guidance. Check this out.
Thank you. Next up is Mary Burby.
I'm going to read a brief statement from a friend who was unable to be here today to then give you an anecdotal response for myself, okay? "To the Elkhorn School Board members and administrators, reading and writing were two of the most important developments in civilization. The free exchange of ideas led to many important discoveries. Debating clubs have existed for hundreds of years. In order to debate, we must acknowledge that there is more than one point of view. Reading fiction, nonfiction, and textbooks inspire us to learn and expand our knowledge of the world. Ideas are revised over time by being shared in books and being debated, i.e. the world is flat. We want our students to have the best possible education so that they can reach for the stars, invent new medications and machinery. Fiction, biographies, classics, all inspire us. Who was to say which book will inspire the next Einstein? Many families cannot afford to buy books. Libraries, both school libraries and public libraries, are essential to our well-being as a society. No book should be banned outright. We need to trust our teachers, librarians, and curriculum specialists to guide our students to age-appropriate materials. Sincerely, Suzanne Keenas Porter, M.D." I just want to say that when I was in fifth grade and I was at a parochial school, I read a book during class, you know. I have to admit, I hid it behind my math book, and it was Gone with the Wind, okay? It was inappropriate, but my friends told me to read it because there's a lot of sexy, Stevie Sexy scenes in it. And so I thought, okay, I'll read it, right? Well, there was a lot in that book. I don't know if you've ever read it or watched the movie, but not so much Stevie Sexy scenes by today's standard, for sure. But I read that. First of all, it didn't make me promiscuous, you know? I didn't become Scarlett O'Hara. I didn't save up my money to buy slaves, but it broadened my horizon and made me want to read more about this conflict and history in particular. Currently, right now, and I just want to address something to advance day back here, I have lived a life. So I know the comment you made to a young person. I lived a life, and I'm reading right now "The Rise and Fall of the Third Reich", and you know what happens when you ban books? It leads to fascists.
30 seconds.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Jessie Lee.
My name is Jessie Lee. I'm a member of the district and have kids in high school. I just want to say I stand with many other parents, students, families who believe this is at its core an attempt to ban books. I know we can call it challenged, we can call it a review, we call it a lot of things, but at the core of it, it's an attempt to remove access to materials from our students in the school libraries. I think I am the same as a lot of parents on probably both sides, but I have faith in my parenting skills. I have faith in the way my kids were raised. I have faith in the actions they take, and because of that, we don't need a book banned because we all have faith in what our kids do and what they access and how they act. Removing the students' access to books, and we've seen a couple of students talk already, but it has a potential to do a lot of harm to their education, their development, and they're developing as intelligent, free-thinking individuals. And it also undermines our roles as parents, so we don't have the right to choose what our students read. It's taken from them. I've also heard the argument that students can just buy books or they can go to the public library, but sadly, a lot of schools, or a lot of students in our school district don't have that ability. They don't have the money to buy books. They don't have the time or ability to travel to the library because of the credit situation. So in effect, removing these books from the school library would be a ban for those students. And then in closing, I just want to say I trust our teachers. I trust our instructional media staff. I know they're doing a good job, and I know that they can determine the proper place for the books in the school libraries. It's our teachers and our instructional media staff's job as educators to educate. It's our job as parents to parent. It's nobody else's job to tell us how to do our job.
Paul Schneider.
Hello, I'm an Elkhorn resident. I've had three daughters that all came to the Elkhorn District, and I'm a recent EASD retiree. I wanted to speak tonight on the issue of the substantial number of books that have been challenged and pulled through review from our schools. But first, I wanted to tell a quick story about a former student. To call the student's life full of family substance abuse and active gang affiliation rough would be an understatement. He attended when his life allowed, but more to socialize than hang out than do much actual learning, with failing grades everywhere despite being kind and one of the brightest students that we had. I had him in seventh grade literature, and we had a social issues unit in which students selected books, including some on the books in question, written for young adults about a myriad of relevant social topics. We are writing partner journals, and since he did not have a partner, I determined that I would be his journal partner. I dutifully wrote my page a day, expressing a few thoughts, asking questions, trying to pry something out of him and so forth. And while he did respond, I knew he wasn't actually reading himself. Gradually, the responses grew, and it became obvious that he was going back and reading the good stuff he had missed until he was writing multiple pages a day. Towards the end of our journal, he wrote an entry thanking me for sharing the book with him while also making sure I wouldn't tell anyone that he actually liked it. Paraphrasing, he wrote, "It is hard to read books that I can relate to, and this is the first time a teacher ever considered who I am and what my life is like." Sadly, the story does not have a happy ending. He passed away soon after high school and missed many personal problems. I think about him often, and like all teachers who suffer the loss of our students, wish I could have done more for him, which brings us back to the issue of books being pulled from our libraries. Young adulthood is a difficult time for many as they try to find their place in the world. To presume that what matters to me and my family also matters to you and your family is father's self. While your child may not struggle with depression, mine might. While your child may not live in a non-traditional family, mine might. While your child may not be the victim of racism, struggling with their sexuality, be homeless, or have suffered from abuse, mine might. While the rainbow flag in a window may not mean anything to your child, it might mean everything to mine. While that class discussion about the Tulsa Race Massacre or debate about gun violence... or a debate about gun violence may not matter to your child, it might mean everything to mine. While your book checks out, what book your child checks out from the library may be different from the book that matters to my child. The world isn't always a pretty place, and we have many students who have already lived a lifetime of struggle. I do not presume to tell any parent how to raise their children. I do not presume to tell you what books or movies your child should watch, how you should worship, what your family should look like, who you should love, or who you should vote for. All I ask is that the same respect be granted towards everyone. I would strongly request that the majority of these books be reinstalled into their respective libraries where each student and parent can decide for themselves what topics, themes, or books are relevant to their lives.
Next up is Steve Perkins.
I think you were the one with the glasses. My alarm went off. I want to apologize.
Oh, you're okay.
Hello, my name is Steve Perkins. Recently, there was an article written about a boy in the Kansas City Chiefs game that painted his face black. The author went on to say how horrible this was and that the boy should apologize for doing blackface. As more information came out, we could see not only was the report inaccurate, it was false. The young boy had painted half his face black and the other half red. With this information, more people got offended by the offensiveness towards Native Americans. As more information came out, we found out not only was he doing it to support Native America, Americans, he is Native American, and his grandpa even sits on the board of the Chumash Tribe in California. Truth is, when people rush to judgment, they're often wrong and create situations worse than the childhood game on telephone. Remember the classic Trump, "Twelve Angry Men"? This classic, eleven of the jurors said right away that the defendant was guilty, and one said he was not. Needless to say, the story continues. More of the case comes out. More of the jurors start saying why the juror one said that he's not guilty. Right now, the person who submitted this review is the first juror. And there are a lot of people here acting like the eleventh other without knowing the entire picture or refusing to look at the information on the table. This person submitted a lot of books on an audit of the entire library of the high school and middle school. An audit like this has never been done. As a community, we should be thankful to this person for being an advocate for following our school policy on this daunting task. I think that while some adults are running to Facebook to start banning book communities or websites giving incomplete information, I think it would be better if everyone paused and thanked the principals and everyone's at the schools for their effort in contributing to this request. For those of you who want to spread misinformation about this request, as well as uninformed information about school policy, please don't be the last juror in the community and let this process play out.
Next up is Melissa Bolger.
My name is Melissa Boehlinger. I'm a parent and resident of Elkhorn. My children go to school here. I am not an outside organization. The school board has laid out policies and procedures before our community, so there's a proper way to deal with reconsideration of instructional materials. I'm here speaking today because I follow Policy 361, and someone else did. It's concerning how this was leaked to the public, and my written requests were only sent to the principals. This has caused a lot of unnecessary confusion and hostility within the community with social media posts and mass emails without all of the information. At this point, the board nor the superintendent should even be involved. The book reconsideration requests were compiled using several different public review sites with criteria flagging books with high ratings for extensive profanity, explicit sex, or graphic excessive violence, as well as ratings based on age. If a book was flagged with any of these concerns, it was included on the list. Some of these books are mild and should and will be deemed for continued use. For example, Lord of the Flies was flagged because of bullying, violence, and mild and infrequent profanity. This book has already been ruled by the middle school principal as having continued use. I want to publicly thank the middle school principal for acknowledging that some of the books I had asked to be reconsidered were not age-appropriate and were either removed or restricted. Other books per the principal's recommendations were put under continued use. However, let me be clear, not all of the books asked to be reconsidered are mild. That is definitely not the case. How do violent or pornographic books support our curriculum? Could this be one of the reasons why it's so difficult for parents to view the curriculum, and we are only giving learning targets? The book sold is available to eighth graders and high schoolers in our district. This book contains explicit aberrant sexual activities, including rape of a minor, prostitution, and explicit violence. Here's a passage. "Something is not right here. I don't know what is going on, but it is not right, not right at all. Mom Taz pats the edge of the bed and tells me to come closer. The old man makes a clucking sound. 'Don't be afraid,' she says. 'Come here now.' I don't move. Her voice turns hard. 'Get over here, you ignorant girl,' she says. Still, I don't move. Then Mom Taz flies at me. She grabs me by the hair and drags me across the room. She flings me onto the bed next to the old man, and then he's on top of me, holding me down with the strength of ten men. He kisses me with lips that are slack and wet and taste of onions. His teeth dig into my lower lip. Underneath the weight of him, I cannot see or move or breathe. He fumbles with his pants, forces my legs apart, and I can feel him pushing himself between my thighs. I gasp for air and kick and squirm. He thrusts his tongue into my mouth." What course and curriculum does this support? Public school libraries are meant to support the curriculum at the school. It's different from a local public library. The school library should advance the education of our students, not distribute porn. We, as a community, all want what is best for our kids. This includes what we're providing for them at school. Pornography and violence are not a part of that. A child cannot go into a store and buy a pornographic magazine. A child needs a permission slip to watch a PG-13 movie at school. We, as a community, need to protect our children from the things that we know are harmful.
Time's up. Nicole Cervantes.
Hello. I feel really prepared, but I'm a parent of four students. Three have graduated from Elkhorn School District, one is still here. I just wanted to share a story about my most recent graduate. She graduated last year and is attending Harvard University in a pretty rigorous program. And although she was top 10 in her class here in Elkhorn, she was pretty worried about what college it's going to be, how hard it was going to be. But she started and then followed up and said, this isn't quite as bad as I thought it was. And then the next week, I talked to her, and she said, wow, like I have to tutor my roommate one or two hours every single night. Like almost everyone in my class, classes are lost. And the next week, she was like, wow, you know, I'm doing it. This isn't too bad. But her thought was, I didn't know what a good education that I got in Elkhorn, which, you know, I had told her, told all of my kids, you're lucky to go to Elkhorn. Not everyone has this opportunity, doesn't have, you know, this education that you get here. And, you know, now that she saw that firsthand, she can help other people and pass it on to other people. And you all know her because she was the school representative on the school board last year. She wishes she could be here tonight and speak because she feels that not banning books or taking things, resources away from students would greatly affect their education, which she has been able to help other people in their education. Thanks.
Crystal and Braska.
It's a little confusing how we all got to be here today. A concerned parent followed policy and exercised her rights to have some materials reviewed by the appropriate school personnel. Not really a highlighted public matter. Yes, it had the potential to be, considering today's political climate and false narratives spreading like wildfire. However, my concern is how it got to be so public so quickly. It was like within a week, all these rumors were flying around among certain groups and spreading to the greater community. So much so that others felt they needed to come to the defense of this parent and the request of the review in the first place. After considering the events that have taken place and conversing with other community and school members, I can't help but come to the conclusion that this has become so public so quickly because of the way certain school staff had viewed and treated the request. They didn't like that the books were challenged at all, took personal offense to it, and spread the false narrative that a parent and/or an outside political group was petitioning for a book ban. During the flag policy issue, I witnessed an accusation from a teacher pleading her case then that a certain people in our community would call for banning books. Furthermore, after the false rumors were spread, the district has done nothing to clarify that no such thing has taken place or can take place. The mere premise that this is a book ban is absurd. Per Elkhorn policy, all books that include profanity, violence, or frank treatment of sex should be of literary value and support curriculum. School libraries are not a public library and fall under different rules and serve a different purpose. Reading some of these books, I seriously question what type of curriculum Elkhorn is all involved in. I am here today in support of the rights of our community members to question public school content. The school is a service to the public by the public and should be treated as such. I believe responsible adult conversations should be facilitated by professionals and not the spread of opinionated rumors. It's unethical and contrary to solving problems. I believe consensus can be met through responsible conversation and that we, as a community, probably have more in common than we think, especially when it comes to protecting our children. I understand that some of the books in the request are benign and have lots of literary value. But I do know there is a lot of books on that list that contain extremely graphic scenes that, under any concept text, have no business in front of the eyes of our youth. Eroticism has no place in the school library, and neither does books that contain X-rated street lifestyles expressed in a graphic nature involving drug dealing, drug use, prostitution, and extreme violence. If there are stories that can be of life benefit involving these types of situations, it can be done in a way that spares the extremely graphic content that a lot of these books contain. I believe the small inconvenience of a temporary restriction on any curriculum books is a small price to pay in order to ensure that harmful books or books that don't support curriculum are removed from the school. There is a report that shows some extremely graphic scenes that are pure eroticism, and it's all there for public review.
Paul Water.
First of all, I want to say my name is Paul Water, and I am an Elkhorn resident, a father of five children. And I am also a local pastor here. And so I have concerns about a number of different areas with respect to our community as a whole. And I think probably many of them overlap with many of the concerns that you have. I want to say how much I appreciate the school board and each one of you school members, what you do, the time that you commit to this. And I know you don't get enough thanks, and you certainly don't get any sufficient compensation for the amount of work that you do in overseeing these things. And so especially when something contentious arises, I know that this is a challenging thing. And often, you have to be put in an uncomfortable position having to make difficult decisions in a spotlight that you probably would prefer not to have. So I want to say how much I appreciate you and just thank you very much for your service. I want to remind you of something because I am a pastor, and so I want to remind you of something that's very important with respect to your position as a school board. You do have authority. You have authority in this community. And we like to speak a lot in the United States about democratic authority. You have authority because this community has voted for you and has put you in these positions of authority. But I want to remind you that there is a more fundamental source to your authority. And so I'm just going to read to you a verse from the scripture to remind you where that authority comes from. Romans, chapter 13, and verse 1, the Apostle Paul says, "Let everyone be subject to the governing authorities." That's you, in this case, governing authority over the school. "For there is no authority except that which God has established." The authorities that exist have been established by God. So I want to remind you that you are, your authority is ultimately authority that comes from God. And if you were to read on in the entire chapter and the entire discussion that Paul has in this context, he even calls you as the authority, he calls you the servants of God. And so when you are making decisions and you are addressing issues, and I understand many of the comments today are very passionate, but they don't speak to any issue that you are currently addressing. So I appreciate that. But in all of the decisions that you're making and all the issues that you address, I want to remind you and encourage you to be mindful where your authority comes from and the real source of that because you are a servant of God. And I want to just say this, I consider myself a servant of God, a pastor. And I know that means that I will give accountability to Him for my service. And I want to encourage you to think of that as well when you think of what you do on the school board. Thank you very much.
Hannah Coppins. Sorry, maybe that was Hannah. Nope, she left. Oh, okay. All right, then we will move to Ellen Hawley.
Good evening, my name is Ellen Hawley. I'm a retired counselor in the Elkhorn School District. I worked here for 20 years. I have a 34-year professional counseling career. I actually am a nationally certified counselor, which is like taking the bar exam. So I do have some professional experience in bibliotherapy using books that reflect kids' real experiences. Unfortunately, the experiences that we would hope our kids could have, a lot of them don't get those experiences, and they are exposed to drug abuse, alcohol abuse, sexual abuse, poverty. And I think as the adults in the room, we need to recognize that. I'm sure there are some books on this list that may not have found a place in our school libraries. And I have full faith that our administrators and our library staff will find those and move them, or books will be moved to the incorrect part. As a pastor, I'm going to disagree with you a little bit because the authority really comes from the voters, from people who show up at elections and who vote for school board members. That is the direct authority. Intellectual freedom should not be a partisan issue. I've certainly not made it one, do not intend to make it one. I do believe that we all here believe in the importance and the strength and the power of a good, strong public education, which leads our children, now adults for many of us, to be successful in life. I did read all 1,200 pages of the book review. The part that I was uncomfortable with, beside the sheer number, which was more than any other book review request in the country ever. Okay, the average book review request is seven, okay, last year. But my concern was it appeared to be on a school forum, an Elkhorn Area School Board forum. And I was like, well, I wasn't aware we had a forum. Isn't that interesting? And then after talking to some administrators, there is no such forum. And I think the fact that that was used, it was very misleading, and I think it was very disingenuous. So I believe that all of us here in the room have good faith in our educators and our administration, our school board, to make good decisions. But I also do think that parents feel they know their children best. And I don't feel it is right that a small group of folks who are well within their constitutional and school or policy rights have the right to tell many of us who may disagree what our kids can read and what our kids can't read. Because what comes next, art? Are we going to be able to look at Baroque paintings anymore? So thank you for your time. I do attend every school board meeting when I'm in town, so I'd encourage you to do the same.
And our last one is Brenda Johnson. She loves her children. Oh, okay. All right. That concludes the EAS comment time.
May I have some? I'm not going to respond anyway.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you to the teachers and the administrators that have been going through this entire ordeal and feeling, like taking time out of their days to be able to look at all these books and try to figure out what's what, where's where. I know that it has been difficult for a lot of those individuals. And I just want to say I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
I would add that I want to thank everybody that came and had the conversation, made their comments in a very respectful manner and respectful of the differing perspectives. I thought everybody did a nice job of maintaining that overall. Just so that everybody's clear, and I know that there was a communication that went- The, just so that everybody's clear, and I know that there was a communication that went home, I always try to stay upfront matters as they arise. One of the questions that was asked is why did it become so public? Why I sent the communication out was because when the challenge of materials was so comprehensive that the principals as part of that step had to go through the list and see who all had books that were checked out, that were already out in circulation to students. So they had to contact those students' parents and families and let them know that they had a book per our policy that's currently in, in place at that first level, the books needed to be pulled out of circulation. So long story short, that created a significant disruption because of the magnitude of the challenge. And that led to open records requests and, and people inquiring, well, what's going on? Led to teachers, you know, looking at, well, gee, how many do I need to go through my library where it was 281 books at the high school, 163 books at the middle school and pull those? And so because of the sheer number of the books, many of them, my understanding is just close the, the classroom library piece. So had it not been 444 books, had it been less than that or more focused, that level of disruption may not have taken place. It may not have facilitated that need. That's not making a judgment on it, just sharing the facts from that aspect and why the communication was sent out to let everybody know, you know, what was going on and why the disruption was there. Once the high school, the middle school has finished his review, once the high school finishes his review, I will send another notice out to the community, letting them know the principal's findings. Policy 361 goes to the first level, the principals do the review. Secondly, then if, if there is an appeal, it doesn't mean that there will be an appeal. If there is an appeal, it goes to a committee made up of myself, the curriculum director for the age range of the appeal and a librarian from that level. We then review whatever an appeal is, render a decision. And then ultimately, if there's an appeal of that decision, then that would go before the school board. I know that the members of the policy committee have asked to look at policy 361. We did update it just a couple of years ago, but we probably, you know, I'll be frank, we didn't account for the potential level of disruption that can take place from that, which really doesn't benefit anybody from all sides. I think some shared that, you know, the confidentiality of the request for the review was kind of lost because of the magnitude of it, because the books happened to be pulled from circulation. Most policies don't require that. At a first step, they allow the review to take place and then for them to be pulled if it's recommended to be pulled. Also, there's some other factors that we'll look at at that policy committee and, and look at the recommendations to bring to the board as a whole moving forward on that. So I just wanted to give everybody kind of that, that status of where that is. That if you are wanting to look at, there were two documents that were submitted as part of the challenge. One was a 1,200-plus page and the other was a 600 and something page as part of the, which included reviews. And, you know, I give credit to the individuals submitted. There was a lot of work to pull all that together and, and the rationale as to why they were wanting the books reviewed. Those documents I'd be happy to share and I did share that with the community as a whole. If stamps that gave the impression that they're related or official documents of the school district were removed. It is an open records requirement. I know many of you in here have probably seen it shared or distributed online as those emails are open record. I think that, I just wanted to make sure that we had, you know, that was shared since there's a large group here in a public interest just so everybody understands the process.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, we are going to move on to the Neola Policy Services presentation.
And you are all welcome to stay for the entire meeting if you want. Official people don't get offended if you don't. I know there's a band concert as well. Those are fire alarms, right? Yeah, somebody, somebody called the fire alarm, probably.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I just had a message for my kid saying that the fire alarm went off at the high school.
That's if people are wondering why, who were texting, I was feeling like it's a fire alarm.
Thank you. I'm dropping them all even anywhere.
Thank you. So I'm Timon Sager. And so tonight, thank you for inviting me to talk to you about Neola and policies. So a little bit about my background. I have 34 years or had 34 years of education, the last 12 as a superintendent. And policy has been one of these things that throughout my career has been vitally important. And so Neola is an organization that deals with policies. And Neola started out as a, in Ohio with what would be considered our thesis. And the policy group split off from that and formed Neola. And so Jason, if you could advance it to the round, next one. So what is Neola? Again, it's a cooperative policy development. And Neola represents over 1,600 schools in six states. And we've been in Wisconsin for 30 years. And so in Wisconsin, we have 11 associates. So there's 11 of us. We're all former superintendents. We all use Neola in our districts. That is a criteria. So we've been in the seats, we've used policy and we've also used Neola. And while it started in Ohio, every state that Neola's in the six states, the policies are specific for that state. And so 30 years in Wisconsin, we use policies specifically for Wisconsin, written for Wisconsin, doing Wisconsin laws and everything. And we work with not only the associates who are all former superintendents, we've worked with three law firms from Wisconsin. You know, the, the three that are listed there and, and they represent districts throughout the state. And we have attorneys from all those law firms that help us draft the policies, help us work on the policies. So we're currently in 340 of the 400 school districts in Wisconsin. And why do people use Neola? Because it allows the district to prioritize board and administration time. The time and cost savings of looking at different policies. The time and cost savings of trying to keep up with the changes in the laws and policies. And, and when I was a superintendent, I'm a little embarrassed to, to say, when I first started out, I found policies that hadn't been looked at in 20 years. Because of the amount of policies school districts have, you tend to, if something bubbles up, you work on that one, but you don't have time or the resources to look at, at all of it. Again, the velocity with state changes and, and federal law and districts have found themselves unprepared if they're litigated, if they're called on the policies, if they haven't looked at it. And again, peace of mind of having somebody else also looking at your policies. So going to the next. So this is, and this is from the last two-year term. So it's not this current biennium budget, but this is the number of laws or bills or pending litig- or pending laws and, and bills or committee hearings on the different things. And as you can see, K-12 education is the top. There are more bills and committees that talk about different mandates, et cetera, for K-12 education than anything else. And when you look at just pending and failed and, and vetoed and, and all of that, that is something that is daunting to keep up with.
This is just in state, in the state of Wisconsin.
This is just Wisconsin. And again, it doesn't include this year, but it's the two years prior to this. And so it's something that as Neola, we look at, at Neola, we follow the bills in Wisconsin and federal very closely. And so if you want to go to the next slide. And this is the growth of Neola clients. This is just through 2022. There are about 15 or so school districts or more that have come on since 2022 in, in the area. And Neola does, we have districts, we have a district, our smallest district has 300 students. And one of our largest is Madison, who has just currently come on board and they're drafting. So we have to make our policies that are broad enough and have flexibility enough that we meet the local needs. Because every district and, and every community is different. And so the policies are written, so there is some choice that meets the district needs. So the services we offer are the bylaws and the policies. We also offer administrative guidelines, which are usually the, what do we do? So you have a policy and the administrative guidelines are how you're going to implement the policy, what steps you take. We also work with staff handbooks. We also have a student handbook and we also have forms. Whether it's a field trip or any form that you can think of, we have a form for it, for any, to go along with the policies. And so this is just a, a few of the districts in your area that use Neola right now. And again, it's not an all-encompassing list. It's just a few of them in the area that I called that we are working with and we are drafting with them. And so what is our, our, what does it look like? And so in Neola, we have the zeros through the 9,000. So the zeros are the bylaws. They deal with the board. They talk about committees of the board. They talk about the officers of the board. They talk about how often you meet. They talk about how you meet, et cetera. And then the 1,000s deals with administration. And what's the relationship with administration and what are the policies that typically relate to them? 2,000s are your programs. You'll have things there like your graduation requirements and your open enrollment, et cetera. 3,000s are your professional staff, which are your, anybody with a license, your teachers, your counselors, et cetera. 4,000 are your support staff, your career professionals, et cetera. 6,000 deals with your business office and, and all your finance policies. 7,000 deals with your, your property and, and your buildings, et cetera. 8,000 is the operation and how you're going to operate on different avenues. And the 9,000s is usually community relations and what relations the board has and the sta- and the administration have for the staff. And so our process, when we are, when we bring a district on, we start by meeting with the superintendent and the administrative staff. And Neola has templates. And so we start with, we have a template for every policy. We talk about the templates. We talk about the policies. We also have more policies than most people take. We have close to about 475 different policies. Most districts use about between 410 and 420 number of policies. So there are some policies that not every district takes. It's germane to, to that district. Then, so then we develop a draft update policy manual. So it's with the templates and we incorporate any current district policies. We include if there are any district-specific policies that, that you want. And so we have our template, but you can include district-specific policies with that. And it's facilitated by one of the associates. And in this case, it would be me and it would be up to six onsite visits and 26 hours of time meeting face-to-face or virtual with the administrative team. And then because you have a policy committee, then the normal step is it's reviewed by your policy committee. The, the book or the policies of the templates. And then usually the policy committee then weighs in and there might be some revisions in that case to the policies and we work on that. And then from there, then it's, it's optional of, you know, then it goes to the board. And because you have a, a policy committee, some districts with a policy committee just do one reading, some do two readings. It's district-specific, but it's review and adoption of the Board of Education, usually two steps. And then we take care of posting it on your website. And so all your policies would be on your website for all the public and anybody to see. And then the timeline on this is dependent on district schedule. And it can take three to six months or three months, excuse me, to a year. Most of them take about six months to go through all the different policies. But that doesn't mean that we can't prioritize, there's certain areas or certain policies you want to prioritize. We can start with those. And then, so Neola provides also then it's part of a ongoing relationship to updates a year. And so an update came out May and June and we just got done working with districts on that. The next update is coming out actually the end of this week. And then the following May, the update will come up. And so it's an onsite visit by myself or another associate working with you on talking about what are the updates? What are the recommendations? And again, there are choices whether you want to take the recommendations, what you want to put in there. And then it's reviewed by the board and approval. And then there's also some things called special updates. So during COVID, et cetera, there were special updates as the law was changing every time we turned around. There, depending on when it comes out, the new Title IX regulations were supposed to come out last May. Then they were supposed to come out in October. Now they're looking at maybe April, the new federal Title IX regulations, depending on when they come out. If they coincide with the regular update, it'll be part of that. If not, it'll be a special update with everything that comes on there. And so when we do our updates, our updates are, come from several different sources. They come from, as associates, they come from, from us. And when I say they come from the associates, we, when we meet with the districts, we talk with the districts and one of the questions we ask, are there any policies you want us to take a look at? Are there any policies you wish we had? So suggestions right from our clients, right from the districts we work with. And it also comes from the laws and it also comes from the attorneys who say this is something we're dealing with. This is something that we should have addressed. And so here are just, Jason, if you go down to that policy, here are just some of what's going on in the last three years. Nondiscrimination and harassment. And again, that will probably be updated again this spring as Title IX comes out because it's also related to your, your nondescript weapons, special updates. Your Edgar is your financial ones and that's where your auditors look at what policies do we have to have for, for the financial? Food service, we just got done doing a big food service, one in this last update because federal government added some things to the food service meal program and keep going. School visitors, home-based students, health and CPR, and also the Wisconsin Association. And, and there are also things called technical corrections. So when Neola comes out with a update, there are, are policies that, that should go to the board for board approval. There are policies that we call technical corrections. And those are technical corrections are, after reading them, we noticed there might be a misspelled word. We noticed that their punctuation i- is, is wrong. Or we noticed that the law or the statute has changed. So we got to redo the statute or we add a statute. So they don't significantly change the policy. They're just technical corrections. And usually those are approved by the superintendent, district administrator. But they usually include the board of saying, here are the technical corrections and, and here's what has been. Again, we also provide student and staff handbooks that are related or aligned to the policies. We monitor and the posting and the review of your policies. And, you know, there's also some basic and advanced keyword searches. So as part of a Neola client, you can search. Search not only your own policies for keywords, but you can do a um, what is called a meta search where you can search. All sixteen hundred school districts for, for a, a keyword or a policy. So if you're looking at, if you're looking at, let's say um. Policies related to um, discrimination, you could key that in and you would get. The policies or have access to policies from all sixteen hundred clients. So if you wanted to do any district specific. Policies or you wanted to change yours. And then there's a legal assurance. If it's a Neola policy, so. As I said, there are district specific policies, but if it's a Neola policy, we stand behind our policies if they are um. Legally challenged. And so our attorneys will work with your attorneys and, and help defend the policy. Because we stand by the policies because they're Wisconsin. And what makes Neola different than maybe some other sites or some other companies? It's one, it's the onsite work. It's the concierge service. I like to call it where we're working hand in hand. And you're working with former superintendents who have all used Neola. Um, it's access to over four hundred, as I said, it's, it's over four hundred and fifty, actually legally vetted templates and policies. Um, and it's policies that are online. Um, and district website is included in the service. So we put it on the district website. Um, for people to come and we update the website as you change your policies. And every um, again, policy administrative guideline form is vetted by our attorneys. And then also the update. So we do, it's not a one and done. It's not a, we work with you to come up with your policies and, and we're done. It's, we have two updates a year and if there's a special update, we include that as well. And then feedback is incorporated from all the districts and our attorneys. And again, also we have the option of an employee handbook, which is a one-time fee. Um, and is available and is updated annually along with the special updates. So um, the next slide would be what, um, and I just kind of put your logo there is, is if um. The public was going to um, looking at policies, they'd see something like this. And so that would be the front page. And then the next thing they would do is they would see the policy manual. So they could click on any one of those sections and bring up, so this one clicked on the seven thousands. On property and you could bring up all the policies under that. Or this one is sixty-five oh five crowdfunding. Um, and the, the policies. A- and so there's also a search. That people can search on, I'm looking for a certain policy, where is it? And so board members, administration, public can search. Then this is what the sample update looks like. It's an overview of um, what an update looks like. This happened to be twenty twenty. And if you. Take the next slide. With every update we do, we provide a rationale for every policy we update. So this is the policy we're updating. Here's the rationale for why Neola is updating. And then we usually do a recommendation. This is recommended because of OCR standards. This is recommended because of a change in, in state law. This is recommended, et cetera. This is something that is um. Is there that um, Neola is not recommending or not. It's just some available or additional things to consider. And so um, and then you go down and by a simple click of the button. It copies all the updated policies. And um, your current policy that responds to it or corresponds to, to a drafting area. And so there's a drafting area that's, that um, depending on who you give access to, usually it's administration a- and the board, policy committee. And that's where we work at the templates. That's where we work at um, revising the policies. And then those draft policies go to the policy committee um, for review. And then those draft policies come to the board. And once they're approved by the board, then um, Neola moves them over to the active side. Um, and it replaces the policy you currently have. A- and so um, so again, drafting area and, and the different bylaws. And that's what a, a draft looks like where it's. Green is um, your policies will look like green is what has been added. And words that are struck out are crossed out. And so you are editing and, and you can add specific words or phrases depending on. Um, your district specific. And so you go to, to the next one. And then what we do is. We go through and, and I go through and say, what policies are in this update? Have they been adopted? Have they been rejected? And it's district specific. And then Neola takes that and puts it on. And so I went really quick, um, because I know you, you have a hell. Um, quite a bit of an evening and you still have more to go. So um. I'm happy to answer any questions on Neola or anything that I can share with you.
Um, I guess I'll go first. Um. I'm on the policy committee, um, a little bit of background. So budget numbers. To make sure with the, the audience, what are we, what are we talking about to get going the first year and then what are the annual fees?
So um, right now, um, Neola to do all the drafting to, to take your current policies, look at them and draft it and get that um. It's um, sixteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars for that um. Drafting of the policies um. In February, that is up, um, it is going up to seventeen thousand um. One twenty, um, because we're right at the end of the year. That's the policies. And so um, most districts start with the policies. If they want to add administrative guidelines, that's about another ten to eleven thousand for it. Um, most districts will start out with the policies and, and then decide if they want the administrative guideline. So that's the upfront cost. And then from there, it's um, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars for annual webpage um, maintenance fee. And then um. Twenty-seven fifty for the two updates or one thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars, five dollars per update. So a, a total cost of thirty-five, forty-five annually.
If we were to do the administrative as well.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So yeah, so the upfront cost is only for um. The, the policies and the administrative guidelines are separate. If you have both of them, your annual fee is not, does not change. So whether it's annual fee for just policies or annual fees for just for policies and administrative guidelines, it's the same.
So for, when Title Nine comes up, when we have your help, is there going to be a special charge for that?
No. It's included in there. So, so your yearly fee includes those two updates and any special updates that may come out.
Okay, so we sign up with you five years of program. Maybe give me some history. Has anybody ever started with you guys? And said after five or ten years, we're done?
Um, we haven't had people that have walked, we've had, we've had. One district that mutually decided that we would go the separate ways because ev- every, they got to the point where. A majority of their policies were district specific as opposed to the Neola templates. So it didn't make sense in that case for. Us to continue to work together. That was a mutual decision where actually Neola brought it to the district of saying. Since most of your policies are district specific, you might want to consider. Um, walking away. That's been the only district.
Okay.
Um.
And my final question, maybe. Um, so if we have a district policy that, that we wanted you guys to vet and more or less kind of make sure it was. All legal and all that, have you done that?
We've vetted things. Um, most of the, most policies that you come up with, we already have a template for it. Um, there are a few policies that, um, for example, I just had a district add a policy for um. Their official color and pantene. So, so that's a district specific.
Yeah.
Policy. We weren't going to vet that one, et cetera. But most of it, we have already addressed it. And again, if you have a policy. That um, you think we should look at, as associates, we bring it to, as associates, we get together numerous times a year with the attorneys and we bring it to them. And then they start to look at it and, and start to say, okay, you know, um, and we've taken what districts have and incorporated them into the Neola policies. And added to it, embedded it, and it becomes a policy for everybody. Everything.
All right. Next.
I remember um. When we talked with you earlier, there was something with um. Like a percentage of if our policy is within a certain percentage of.
Yeah.
Or whatever.
Yeah, it's, it's usually about eighty percent. Um, it's seventy to eighty percent, but it's, it's policy specific.
Okay.
So I, I can't say there's a certain percentage that you add because it depends what you add to it. Um, Neola will back anything in the policy that came from Neola. So if, if majority of the policy is Neola, Neola will back. The policy. If, if the majority of the policy is yours, we will not do that.
Right, but if, if there was something in the Neola policy that we wanted to change or insert uh, some language. Does that, is there provision for that and then you'll still back it?
There is. And so what happens is then, then um, we have our attorneys make sure that that is still something that we back and we let you know upfront.
Okay.
I would imagine if we change the policy that your attorney said that now makes the. Open to litigation, we're not going to back it even if it was.
Right.
Two words.
Right.
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 Okay.
I have a lot.
Okay, go right ahead.
Um.
I didn't ask any of you?
No, you asked a few of them and I appreciate that. So I mean, I kind of took a few off my list. Um, so. Is there, I, I understand that, that, that there is a specific amount. Of a specific policy. You said eighty percent, like it has to match relatively within eighty percent, okay? And of course, Jason just mentioned um, that if it's, makes it substantially different. First, for example, if there's a policy that you have and then we insert the word not. I'm assuming that no longer would qualify for, for whatever it is. Okay, but that's not my question. Okay? The actual question that I have here is, is, is there a specific amount that we have to look at in terms of matching you guys for? All of our policies overall. You just mentioned the, the, the school district that.
Right, no, there's not. We go policy by policy.
Okay.
A- a- and so, and, and your first thing of, of the not, it may or may not be because. There are policies where there are choices. So not everything is um, a hundred percent black and white and not everything is. So there are policies where as a district you can choose, here's option one. Um, here's option two. And option number one and option number two may be totally different. It depends on what you want to.
They're both legal.
They're both legal. It, it's based on what you as a district, um, a- and, and what, what you believe in, in where you want to go. Um, so for example, I will give you um, an example, um. Policy eighty-eight hundred um, is the policy regarding nursing mothers. Um, the law, um. The law gives any employer, districts as well, the opportunity or the right to say that um, if a um. Mother is expressing um, that they have to keep track of your time and it could be unpaid time. So there's, there's a paragraph there that, that says that because that, that is in there. There's also a paragraph below it that says. Just the exact opposite. We're not going to ask you to keep track of your time and, and we're going to pay you. Both are legal. Um, both are, are acceptable. It depends on which way the district wants to go. Okay?
So the, I mean, obvious, I mean, I, I don't want to state the obvious here, but we are clearly not Milwaukee, Madison, Green Bay, et cetera. So I mean, there are, there may be some. Difference of values that some of the other districts have. Then that's, that's incorporated into that if I'm understanding correctly.
Right, right.
And it gives you, gives you the choices to be able to make it based off of.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Um, so in terms of uh, finances, okay? So you said to, as of right now, it's sixteen thousand some odd.
Right.
Okay. Um, in February, it goes up to seventeen thousand, but from there. It then drops down to about three, maybe three and a half thousand uh, per year, uh, depending on kind of what certain, certain services you have. Okay, um, is there a contract? So if, if two years from now, we're like, hey, look, this just isn't working. Is there a contract that all of a sudden we're like. Hey, we're locked into a contract for the next ten years. Okay.
No.
Okay. For another, I think that's, that's the one I got.
I don't mind.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Kathy?
No, no question.
What either of our students have a question?
I think the, the policy committee and the discussion of it, we felt it was at the point they wanted to bring it to the, the board to have a general discussion. There's no. Motion related to it at, at this time. That's something just to have a conversation. See if we want to. Bring it back with three hundred and twenty-five of the districts in the state, to be honest, when we. Look at a lot of our policies, when we go out and we look at, when Jody goes out to look at other. Districts and what they have, the vast majority are Neola. Um. Later on in the meeting, you'll see we have a first reading for some additional policies. And one of the discussions was, will do we even forward? The policies that we're considering, looking at Neola, well. We compared the, the policies were written, taken, based right off of Neola's original policies because the language was practically identical. Um, so. From, you know, whoever then took them and wrote. So you see a lot of that that goes on within the districts because policies are. And so forth.
Um. Jason, how many, how many policies do we have currently? Do you know?
Off the top of my head, I don't recall. I believe Jody said when she went through and she documented the comparison contrast.
Yeah.
That it was close to. I thought she said it was close to eight hundred pitches, but.
Right, and then did we have more or less policies than what Neola has?
Oh, we had slightly less.
Less, that's what I thought.
There was, there was additional. Thank you. I, I, you brought some to my head here. So for example, if we change to match a lot of the policies. With Neola, okay, we're talking eight hundred policies. Are we going to have to go back to do every single one of those policies and go on every single one of those policies?
You can do them in batches or groups, but yeah, that's why it takes six months to a year.
Right, right. And what districts um, usually do is again, in batches. So they may go all the, the one, or the zeros. A- and, and they look at that and they, they approve all the zeros. So they approve it in sections. And then they do one final reading of, of all of it and approve the entire main law type of things.
So I understand, uh, the last question that I had was, is um, the eighty percent rule was for specific policy. What happens if we're taking a look at it and we're like, eh, only fifty percent of the policies that we're, that we're looking at, uh, we want to adopt from Neola? Is, does that cause issues with Neola where, I mean, that, 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 that you guys would say, hey, it's just not worth it or?
We, we will depend, we will defend any of our policies.
Okay.
So if you have a district specific policy, um, that is not our policy, if there's any litigation, we would say this isn't our policy.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can, we can still have as many of our old policies.
Right, sure.
It's just that they. Right.
Okay.
Right, it, it's that additional legal service that um, we, but I'm assuming that if, if you would be having. A district specific policy, you would be talking to your attorneys anyways on something that was major. So, so you'd have their backing. To begin with.
Okay, thank you.
And I had that in my last district. We had a few policies that um, were district specific. Um, that we added, that, that Neola at the time didn't have it, they have them now, but Neola did have them. And so we had worked with our school attorneys. Um, the attorneys that represented us, we went with Boardman and Clark and worked with them on the language. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Tim. Appreciate your time today.
Have a good rest.
Great.
Thanks very much.
On to approval of the minutes. We're, I'm going to have them. Just approving the minutes. Um, okay, from November twenty-seventh, regular session meeting.
Moved approved minutes to November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, regular session, school board meeting has presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the November twenty-seventh regular session, school board meeting. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
This is Ingersoll.
Abstaining.
This is Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Barkus?
Yes.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Um, general and other fund bills.
The general other fund bills covers checks number one, five, zero, eight, three, two, through one, five, zero, nine, six, five. The general other fund bills covers checks number one five zero eight three two through one five zero nine six five. Wire transfers four ninety-three through five oh two and ACH check number three seven two through three ninety-three. The combined amount of six hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred seventy dollars and eighty-eight cents. And there's a memo provides some additional information on several of the bills in your board packet.
Does anybody have any questions on anything? Those that were submitted? Seeing none, then I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I just motion to approve the general and other fund bills, December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Check numbers uh one five zero eight three two to one five zero nine six five, wire numbers four nine three to five oh two, ACH numbers. Three seven two to three ninety-three and mine amount of six hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred seventy dollars and eighty-eight cents as presented.
There a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the general and other fund bills of December eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Check numbers one five zero eight three two to one five zero nine six five, wire numbers four nine three to five oh two. And ACH numbers three seven two to three ninety-three in a combined amount of six hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred seventy dollars and eighty-eight cents. Roll call vote.
Mr. Gaher?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
This is Ingersoll?
Yes.
This is Costa? Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Barkus?
Yes.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
We have the student representative report, this is always my favorite part.
Um starting on the left, the EHS holiday band concert was tonight at seven in High School Auditorium. Um four members of the girls' golf team were awarded the. Honor of All-State Academic Golfers, so we really like to congratulate each of them. And the boys swim team, swim team attended the conference relays and got second place in the two hundred free relay, four hundred free relay, free relay. Four hundred backstroke relay, and got third place in the four by twenty-five relay, and I believe they took, overall they took first.
Awesome.
Middle schoolers were able to explore their own worlds of Minecraft during their robotics class. And here are a couple of pictures of the sixth graders warming up for PE. And the October students of the month kids were recognized for achievements, so we'd also like to congratulate them.
Um Jackson Elementary had their holiday concert this past week and the gym was nicely decorated by artwork that the students made themselves. Um and in the bottom right there, you see our students partnered up and became experts on a topic that. That was chosen by them and they presented their topics to the class and shared what they learned.
Some of the kindergarten classes make tally marks out of pretzel sticks. And last Friday, the school had a holiday sweater day where many kids participated in to get in the festive spirit. And Westside will be having their holiday program on Friday, December fifteenth.
Tibbetts Kindergartners had some gingerbread fun, uh they read different versions of the gingerbread man, compared and contrasted them. And finished up by decorating some gingerbread cookies, uh kindergarteners also worked on successfully writing social sentences.
Four K, five K classrooms dressed to prepare for the upcoming winter season where they hope to see some snow on the ground to play. And the autism support team met last Tuesday, December fifth.
Um CCA students partnered up with the Elton Chamber of Commerce to. For the Let it Glow event, and they're having some holiday fun with dress-up days before their winter break. Uh holiday PJ day, holiday socks and hats day, just like your favorite holiday character day. Ugly sweater day, and then finish it up with dressing CCA gear day.
Thank you very much, guys. Okay, next is a a first reading of new and revised policies.
Alright, for, there's a number of those new policies that the policy committee has forwarded to the school board. Uh first one is a new proposed policy, controversial issues in the classroom, it is one that. Is also, if we were to adopt Neola as a policy that is in there, it's a common one, we don't have a. Current policy related to this topic. I know it was part of your board packet, are there any specific discussion points or areas that you'd like to discuss this?
This was written from the Neola policy, right, because we didn't, we had, we had some proposed language. And there were only some minor differences, right, and.
Yeah, Devin had submitted several policies, um recommendations and. What um we did in the policy committees kind of went through and matched the state statute language, looked at both, there were. In some of the submissions, minor tweaks or adjustments from what was listed in state statute, not that they're substantial, it's more semantics, but.
Yeah.
Um yes.
Did you have any?
No, I mean it looks, I mean it's relative, actually, it looks relatively close to, yeah, what I had originally done, so I'm I'm, if it matters. What Neola has, and you know, Neola's, if if we end up going down that path line, it already makes it fit, so I'm perfectly fine with that.
Okay, next one.
Uh the next item is a human growth and development instruction in parental notice and. Popped out, this is also a, we have human growth development instruction and. You know, we follow the state statutes related to this, this is a policy template again, which. Um was from a Devon source, but also which primarily was was originally must have been taken from. Neola, so again, for the most part, this was adopted, there were a couple. Changes in semantics and words, though we defaulted to what was listed in state statute to keep the language the. Same between those two, so this will be a, the new policy, it really captures a lot of what is already in place from a process standpoint. Were there any questions or policy committee members that you have?
Next one is um the public access to records.
Yeah, as part of going through the policies, you'll see the, a lot of um, what Jody's been doing in in that work is looking to eliminate the rules. Which and and integrate them into one policy, so we don't have a policy and then a. A rule that it just reads as one policy, so the blue language there is really incorporating. Uh pieces from the rules, uh we also wanted to make clear, or the policy committee, you know, wanted to make clear that. Professional development materials are also part of uh materials or a record from the the school district, which. It would be considered, assuming it's not notes or whatever, but there's a state statute and guidelines that are. Related to what is a public record and what's not. Striking the language because we copied over the rules language to there, there is a cost associated to. Public records request, we had felt there was any need to change that, it's really, I, in my eleven years here. I've never had a public records request where they ask for the photocopy, it's always been digital PDFs, so there's really no. Duplication cost on that, the cost comes when it's locating a record. Uh which by statute, you utilize the time of the lowest paid individual who has the ability. And the access to locate that record. So this is really combining those two, the rule and the public access to records policy to them.
Was there never any amount of money that was attached to this?
No, it was just, it was part of, it was the rule, so that's why we're. Proposing to delete the rule. It was just incorporated the the language from the rule into this policy, so we can eliminate.
Gotcha, okay, so yeah, yeah, so it was, it was never an actual like policy, it is not going to be in this policy, correct?
The rule was a.
The rule was a policy, it's, it was like it was split into two different documents.
Gotcha.
We're just trying to just simplify.
Gotcha, put it into one policy, gotcha.
Yeah.
Something that would have made Bara smile, if you go to number two. Uh it should be the legal custodian, not custodians. Cause she like. The the district administrator or doesn't need. It's a single, yes, yes.
Alright.
Is the uh. I mean, the the financial amount, is that standard, I mean, is that something that we said, is that somebody that's?
That was what was in the, that was what was in the rule and we're just transferring the language over.
Okay, there's some may charge more, but really the the locating, that's that's the state statute record, the the districts. Can charge on that, you cannot charge for redaction or. Um which actually ends up being the most time-consuming or legal if. Um if a district consults with like legal related to that, that's, there's certain areas on public records where. You do have to give notice to if it's like a related employee personnel file, which I remember. Building one, but then they have certain rights, and so we're so oftentimes districts will go through legal and make sure they're not violating any. Rights on that, but you can't bill the legal fees to the entity doing the public records.
Gotcha.
So these are all just, um this was first reading, so if anybody has any comments or anything between now and the next. Meeting, which is, are we putting this on as a second reading for next week? So this will be in January.
Got a month to be able to take a look at it.
So if there's anything that you find that, you know, just reach out to Jason and make the suggestion or whatever.
Okay, so Devin, this was, it was called an exhibit, but this was also. This is what we're combining, so we're proposing to delete this one.
Yeah, yeah, so yeah, the exhibit um is what we're proposing to delete.
Oh, okay, that's the reason why, let me pull it up then, okay.
Okay, personnel recommendations.
Hey, we have uh two resignations, Becky Rentschler and Alyssa Ambrose. Um Becky is the girls' golf assistant coach and Alyssa served as the girls' swim assistant coach, I want to thank them both for this. Their services this past season.
Do we have a question about this?
Okay.
I'm not sure if it should be an open or closed, so, because I'm dealing with a person. I'm not.
Then we need to reserve a court.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, so we could discuss, in a future meeting, we could discuss the performance or whatever. If if it's not, or if there are questions related to a personnel matter, then I could put it on a future agenda, discuss it in a future.
Yes, I reserve resignations, that's kind of where I I wanted to just kind of dig into that, figure out what's going on.
So yeah, so we could add that to an agenda. For a future meeting.
Okay.
And and that's can be independent of, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Right. Oh, looking for a motion to approve the personnel recommendation sheet.
I move to approve the personal record range, recommendation sheet for December eleventh, twenty twenty-three as presented.
Moving seconded to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for December eleventh, twenty twenty-three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we have ex, uh some school gifts to accept.
Hey, we've got three gifts this evening, Joanne Shaffer's donated a tent for the track team valued at two thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars. Family and friends of Four Lakes Athletic Club have donated thirteen thousand three hundred and thirty dollars towards the purchase. And installation of a spectator tennis shade, and an anonymous donor has donated. Approximately the other half of that, uh thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars towards the purchase and installation of a spectator tennis. Shade.
Thank you.
Apparent to the student who played tennis, yes.
Yeah, I I don't know, what is the spectator tennis shade, I I I don't know.
It's a shade for people who are watching the tennis matches.
Okay.
Yeah.
Put it on the middle of the tennis courts.
Okay.
So we want to.
I'm moving to accept the generous school visits as presented.
Is there a second?
Second. We're good.
It's removed in the second to accept the generous school gifts as presented, um all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Wanted to thank uh Joanne Shaffer and the family, friends of the Four Lakes Athletic Club. And the anonymous donor for their generous donations. We have an amazing community.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is um. Second reading of the revised policies, sorry, this is just one, right, no?
Yeah, it's just the one policy, this is the second reading, I didn't have any other feedback.
Yeah.
Um I know Julia utilized the the process tonight, there's nothing in policy that prohibited. Her from managing. Public comment how she wanted, so I think everybody had a chance to see that, Jody did point out that we should have a checkbox for student. Um because we didn't have that on the card.
Okay, yep.
Uh we can correct that.
Yep, for sure.
Yeah.
So this, the what, the way we did it tonight was how this is, so it's now.
I kind of put it into practice tonight, um and because it was not something that the entire public. They don't, they weren't expecting that coming in, so that was why I extended the invitation to extend the. The public comment period.
I don't, I I I thought it worked out pretty well, um I mean it.
Well, one of the reasons why I think it's necessary is when you do have a large amount of people wanting to speak and you know that that time is gonna go. The full thirty minutes, um it's helpful to um. You know, just raising hands and, you know, it's sometimes. In terms of who's gonna speak next, this gives order to it and.
Yeah, I think it worked very well tonight, yeah.
Was it, was it randomized? Do we, do we, okay, so it's.
It's done in order, yes.
As far as they were received.
In the way that they were received, yeah, so Jody numbered them for me and we just.
I have a question, I think, I, and I, I believe it came when we discussed this originally. Uh if there are additional people who want to make comments after the initial group is turned in. How would that have impacted what we did early on in extending the time?
But well, during this meeting, we, there was a motion that said that we were gonna extend the time for the sixteen or whatever.
Right, but had we accepted additional comment cards or or people indicating they wanted to comment?
I don't think we were going to, we never had come up for discussion, so.
Let's say if there were two individuals who fill out a comment card at a meeting. Um I had, we have blank ones here, so there would still be time within the public comment, they could. Still fill one out and submit that.
So as long as it's within the public comment period, so. If Julia was on the very last person, right, that she already had, and somebody was like, okay, look, I just heard this person talk. I wanna, I wanna go and fill out a card now, we're still allowed that, okay.
Yeah, and that's where it says one public comment per person, so at each meeting, registration cards may be submitted after the start. Of the comment portion of being so long as time remains. For anyone beginning to submit a registration card prior to the start of the meeting.
Okay, that's, there's, there's the steps.
Yeah, we didn't, tonight in. We probably should have been specific in that. Uh we didn't really put a timeframe on how, it was basically, how long was it gonna take to get through the the cards that were here? If that were to happen in the future, we might wanna make a motion that would be more specific. I'm just curious, yeah. And it and it kind of was a dry test run of the system that, right?
I I think one of the other factors is it has an acknowledgement on there, somebody could always falsify that, but. Well, we, we've never had this to my knowledge, but it's to prevent special interest groups or people from outside the community. Coming in and, you know, submitting.
Or monopolizing.
Um one, one aspect, I don't know if the board, I I'm fine with it as it is, we, you know, and the group. That's representative, um if the board wants to consider, you did receive, and they can, anybody can always email and share their thoughts with the board. Anyway, but we did receive several emails from alumni of the district, I don't know if.
Yeah.
The board wants to, let's say it's someone who doesn't live within. The board wants to, let's say, someone who doesn't live within the district, but they're an alumni of the district, if we want to include them as an acceptable. Public commenter or not, um. Or leave it as is. They can, again, they can always email.
Yeah, at this point, I'd like to leave it. You know, and just, or leave, leave it the way it's stated.
We also saw an example tonight where. One way to do it was where people, I don't know if they're residents of the district or not, but. Sent an email to a resident of the district who then read the comment from.
Right.
You know, someone who wasn't, but that's certainly their prerogative as a resident of the district. I would. Interpret that they could read that, so.
Maybe also, I mean, everybody on the board here received, uh. What, a hundred emails, all over the last like week about, about the whole issue, and it was. I mean, whether or not they lived in the district or not, they were heard. We, we all read them. So I mean, it, it would, I, I agree with Julia. There's no reason to really go into that from there.
So we just need formal approval for the.
Yeah. Yeah, this is the second reading, so looking for a motion to.
I'll move to approve revised policy one eighty-seven public participation at board meetings as presented.
Is there a second? I'll say it. Been moved and seconded to approve revised policy one eighty-seven public participation at board meetings. Um, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Barkus?
Yes.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
All right. Oh, we have the budget development calendar next.
Traditionally, the, the school boards approved a budget development calendar for the upcoming, um, school year. It's, it's hard to put twenty-four, twenty-five actually out there. Um, but typically that does start in, in January, and as you know, our fiscal year is July through June, but. Um, this is kind of highlights the, the different processes, the responsibilities, uh, the timeframe related to that. We've also done a, like a retreat with the board, uh, kind of that Saturday thing. I put a couple of dates in there. I know there's two board meetings. There's two board members missing tonight, so I, I don't. Know if we want to finalize that. Um, that could be kind of to be determined, but, um, we've done that sometime, usually February, March timeframe. Um, we're in the middle of a state biennial budget, so. If, if we're not in that middle of the biennial, sometimes we're waiting to see what the state budget is first, so that tends to push those meetings back maybe a little later.
Yeah, it wasn't, did, was it this year?
We did in April. Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was like, cause we have Adam and Heather both there too.
That's right. Now, how do you, how did you feel like that timing worked?
I, that, that, that's fine, um. You know, depending what decisions the board makes, you're even here a presentation, I know, next Monday night.
Yeah.
And, you know, there could be some, some decisions the board wants to pursue that, that may dictate. Or as I dictate, but let itself to maybe, maybe earlier, maybe, maybe more than once, quote unquote.
Sure.
Depending on.
Yeah, cause. Yeah, depending on what comes out of that, we've got a. Requiem potentially.
Potential.
Yeah.
Decision.
Yeah.
And, I mean, we can always do. Do it in March as well. I just ask that we stay away from. The Saturday on the, before spring break and there's.
Right.
Wisconsin State, the, the youth sectionals for wrestling and skate, which is always an innovative conflict.
Yes, that's right. That was one of the reasons that we changed it.
But it was during the week or during the night, not the, I mean, we did the curriculum retreat in the.
Oh, yeah, that's right. We did that.
So that's another possibility.
So can we just approve this tonight and the members, does need it?
For the dates, yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Sounds good.
What's the purple? Is there any significance to the purple?
Um, it just highlights certain things that may involve the administrative team or. To be honest with you, I have probably a six-page calendar, if it goes a little more detail.
Okay. All right.
Thank you all.
That was nice and light reading.
Yeah.
I need to go to bed for the night.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget development calendar as presented.
Seconded.
So I moved in seconded to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget development calendar. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Announcements?
All right, uh, we're looking to schedule a personnel committee meeting. Just wanted to check and see that. Julia, Devon, and Heather, and Heather's not here, so we can send out calendar invites to check, but we're looking at Monday, January eighth at noon. If not that week, the fifteen.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be.
The eighth works fine for me.
Yeah, we can always do that remote, Devon, if, if you're at work and.
No, I'll take the day off.
Okay. Then, um, two important deadlines are approaching for school board incumbents for the spring election. Incumbents not running for election. Should complete the notification of non-candidacy as soon as possible. The deadline is Friday, December twenty-second. Earlier submission is appreciated. Um, Jody, the, the reason why is if. That doesn't take place and it extends the deadline to January fifth. On the back end. Um, so incumbents and new candidates wishing to run for election should complete the campaign registration. Statements and declaration of candidacy as soon as possible. That deadline is January second, twenty twenty-four. Submission before the holiday break is appreciated. Is there a limited office hours over the break? I'll reach out to Jody Asman if you have any questions. She is a notary, which is required for the declaration of candidacy. So you can get that taken care of right here at District Commons. Um, and then just reminder that we do have a board meeting next December eighteenth. Uh, where the, the elegant item will be the ad hoc committee report. Um, the only question for the, the board is, do you want to have a public comment on that, or do you just want the ad hoc committee report? For that meeting.
I think we should have. Public comments available. That's my personal opinion, but.
Are you gonna have that after the presentation? No, I mean. I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
What are they gonna comment on if they have?
Yeah, that's true.
Heard from that, from the ad hoc. I think if we had thirty minutes afterwards, that would be productive for, for people in attendance, so that they. Could hear, you know, what the committee spent couples hours.
Yes.
By, by policy, the board president also has the ability to limit public comments, so if you wanted to. For example, it's a special meeting focusing on the ad hoc committee and those results. If you wanted to limit it to that topic, you would. Do that, and we should probably notice that.
Okay.
Ahead of time.
Okay.
If you want to.
Yes, I would like to limit it to public comments specifically to the, um.
To the budget?
The budget. Um, and we'll limit it to thirty minutes.
I do know that, um, there were, uh, so what we ended up deciding was that two individuals were gonna come in and, and present the, the overall, uh. Ad hoc committee's presentation. Uh, I know that there were members on that board that did want to come, so I'm glad that we are gonna have public comment, that did want to come to it. Talk about the overall process and kind of, and stuff like that, so.
Sure.
Um. I mean, I'm glad that we have a public comment on that.
Yeah. Um, and I think we'll do a similar, just to give the maximum amount of people able to comment, you know, limit it to three minutes per person as well.
All right. Um. Yeah, and I know, uh, Devon, you had indicated to me you wanted some time during the announcements for.
Yes, um, I will be running for, uh, school board, um, in the spring. Uh, I know that I talked to Jason, or Jason said that that's something that traditionally when you are running, that you just kind of announce the, the public, the, the announcements, so. Uh, I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Um, I am, I as well will be running. As will I.
So those are the three incumbent seats, so, yeah, just for public, where all three incumbents do plan to run. Okay, and then all we have, uh, we do have a closed session to review the school safety drill summary.
Right. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll take a motion to adjourn it to complete the closed session. Person to, has six steps. Thank you that eight five, for anyone here in need to review the written evaluation of the school safety drill, the school board will have.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn to participate in closed. Close. Except your twenty-five. One need to review the written evaluations of the school safety drill. Make do this as a.
Roll call.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Barkus?
Yes.
And Mr. Forrester?
Yes.